Would be the adoption of the agenda. We have several things that we need to make note of before we ask for the adoption. First of all, there's been an added item, item eight point oh two. Number one, this is our benefit coordinators requesting the approval of an amended contract with Synergy Disaster Recovery LLC. This has to do with FEMA and so that's going to be added. That is a consent item. Also, we've been asked to pull on our personnel recommendations, which is twelve point oh one, to pull out separately number twenty five and number twenty six for action. And also to pull on our, which was a consent, but we, these will be pulled for action, also pull under item twenty point oh one, number ten and number eleven, and those will be action items, so forth. Is there anything else?
Number two, the presentation.
Number two on what?
The presentation, number two.
Okay, we, and, and we do, and we will omit the presentation because, right, she's not here.
Yeah, we need to reschedule it.
Ma'am?
We need to reschedule it.
Okay, to, to reschedule it?
Yes.
Okay, well, we can just ask that, get with, with our superintendent and have this rescheduled. She's weren't able to be here this evening, so there will not be any presentations or report on that. Okay, do we have, what's the care of the board?
Motion.
Who made the motion? Okay, Ms. Dunell, Ms. Carlton seconded. If you're in favor for the adoption of the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Aye, so carried. Item, the approval of our minutes, action item of February the fourth of 2025, regular school board meeting, closed hearing and executive session.
Motion.
Aye, Ms. Mathis makes that motion. Ms. Agner seconds it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So carried. And since we do not have any presentations this evening, our reports, we do have this moment, items of interest by the public. If we've got anyone here who would like to approach the board on a matter, this would be your opportunity to do just that. Do we have anyone this evening? All right, if not, we will move on. The consent items all were approved by the adoption of the agenda except for the ones that have been pulled. And so that would bring us to the personnel items, I believe, twelve point oh one would be our first action item on two of the personnel items, which is number twenty five and number twenty six, and we will take those individually. So twelve point oh one, number twenty five.
Motion.
Aye, Ms. Carlton makes that motion. Ms. Agner seconds it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Aye. Item number twenty six on twelve point.
Wait a minute, I, I didn't realize we was voting no's.
Well, it's, we, okay, we, we.
I just need to change mine to nay for twenty five.
What's your vote on twenty five?
Nay.
Okay, nay, okay, we do have one of us, okay. And then on twenty six, twelve point oh one, number twenty six.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Agner, second by Ms. Carlton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Nay.
Okay, Ms. Dunell opposes. Okay. Well, this brings us down to item twelve point oh five, appointment of administrative personnel. This is the appointment of Jessie Braswell for district athletic director effective March the first, twenty five through June the thirtieth of twenty five.
Does that move?
Aye, Ms. Mathis makes that motion. Ms. Agner seconds it. Any discussion?
Yes, I do have a question. This is going to, we're approving this to the end of this school term, correct?
Yes.
So when appointments come during the summer, what would be the contract then? Is it gonna be from?
With that particular contract with Coach Braswell, we are going to look at that contract and look at that job description and probably change some things in his job description. Those things we've not decided upon yet, so I spoke with Coach Braswell and said we would make his contract good through June thirtieth, and then we will have something else in place at that time.
I don't think that's necessarily my question. My question is the timeframe, because I know when the recommendation came from the previous superintendent, I think the concern was that she got some advice from some other superintendents to offset the timing of the contract because of the football season. So my question is, when you bring it to us, I guess at the time that you bringing it to us, is it gonna align with the appointment date of like your other administrative personnel from like June till the end of the year, or are you doing it at a different time? So that's what I'm asking.
Yes, through, yes, through February. That's why I, I see the date of March first as when it was effective, and I'd like for it to continue being that date.
So when you bring it to us, although you're making changes to the job description, you still gonna do a different, I guess, term of the contract? Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, that's what I'm asking.
But right now, this one, it will be June the thirtieth, and then the next one will be a different date.
Okay, that's what I was asking, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Aye, motion's been made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So carried. Item twelve point sixteen is the job description revision. Ms. McCall, the interim director of BBTC, is requesting to revise job description for grant facilitator position number zero one three one five three one oh one to grants project manager and CTE recruitment specialist.
Motion.
All right, motion for that?
Second.
Aye, Ms. Carlton makes the motion. Ms. Agner seconds it. Any discussion? Aye, if not, if you're in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Aye, so carried. We want to acknowledge on item eighteen point one oh one, BBTC is acknowledging the return of a donated 2014 Mack semi truck, which this was donated by the Tooten Logging Company to help out in our, during the time of our CDL program, and we appreciate that donation, but now we're returning it back to Tooten Logging. But we appreciate that, that gesture that they did here for us, okay? And now, item twenty point oh one, and two items was pulled for that. This was a disciplinary committee, and we, this is recommendations from them, but item number ten, number thirty is before us as an action item. They, the committee has called upon it and has recommended expulsion.
Make motion.
Aye, Ms. Carlton makes that motion. Ms. Agner seconds it. Aye, any other discussion? Aye, if not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Nay.
Okay, Ms. Dunell opposes. Also, also number eleven, which is number thirty one, recommendation by the disciplinary committee to expel, that was their recommendation, and so.
Motion.
Aye, Ms. Mathis makes the motion for expulsion. Ms. Carlton seconds it, okay? Any discussion? If not, all in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Nay.
Aye, Ms. Dunell opposes, okay. All right, this brings us, if I haven't overlooked anything, this should bring us down to items of interest by the superintendent and board, and we do need to have a short executive session after the conclusion of this meeting, so bear that in mind. So, Mr. Superintendent?
It's been a busy, busy few weeks, to say the least, but yesterday I had the opportunity to go down to Steen Hatchie and visit and be a part of their PIT, parent involvement team meeting, and the place was packed, and I so appreciate Mr. Bray and what they do down in Steen Hatchie and that school. They are, they are growing as far as support and people that are involved with their school. So I was pleased to be there and talk with the people and answer some questions, and then got to go to Ms. Roberts' middle school last night. They had family engagement night, and there was nowhere to even sit in the library, it was so full. So that was a great turnout for them. That's always exciting to see parents come in and be involved with their kids, and obviously those aren't the kids that we, we want to see the parents of most of the time, because those are your kids that are already performing academically, but it's always good to see that kind of support. Also, I want to just bring this up, because it's a good thing, positive for our community. Tomorrow at 3:00 PM, the school nurse down in Steen Hatchie, Jody Shipman, will have a house dedication from Christian Aid Ministries. Her family has been displaced since Hurricane Helene, including two that are students at the Steen Hatchie School, and they're excited about this milestone and thankful for the blessing provided through the hard work of the Christian Aid Team. Back in September, her family had to abandon their home and swim to safety to escape the storm. What an awesome turnaround, and she has given us her permission to share this story, so we're excited to, to know that she's had a house built for her and dedicated from the Christian Aid Ministries. So those are good things that are always a blessing to us and to our community, and I just wanted to, to mention that for Mr. Bray and, and the Steen Hatchie School. A lot of good things going on around our school district where athletics is concerned. We're working on a lot of things as, as far as our academics and getting ready for testing, and I've got all my administrators here again, which is lovely to see, and I want to give them an opportunity to speak for a moment on good things going on in their schools, and we'll start with Ms. Smernius, Perry Primary.
Hey, guys. I want to give a shout out to my teachers and my instructional. So, school improvement visit, and it's the first time. Positive feedback, same. In fact, we're doing what we have to do to achieve the. Had that today, and Dr. Rudd was with me, so. And then we have a very busy week next week, and so we would love for you guys to come out. On today is our family engagement. We haven't done that since I've been here since the grade science fair, and we want that Tuesday, starting at four thirty. Then Thursday at nine AM, we will have a musical, The Very Hungry Caterpillar with our first grade team, and so our first graders will be performing, and so. Next Friday, wow, next week is so. Next Friday is picnic with parents, and so we'll have parents on campus to join our students for a picnic. We have our plastic book fair. Positive note before we go on for spring break.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. McCall, tell us about that beautiful Big Ben Technical College.
So, our enrollment. We posted eight. We're excited about that. A lot of interest in world. We had adult lack crowning, we had eighty three after the L N to R N program.
Wow.
A hundred and seventeen. And we started teased. Early in this month, I don't know.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCall. Mr. Finley?
Yes. Couple encouraging data points to share with you. When I got to the high school at the end of November. We, we were at ninety point four at that time, and this week overall, as a school, we're at ninety two, so one point six percentage points. In front of that, we wrapped up PM two testing at the end of January, and then looking at that PM two data, our tenth grader is tied with the state at forty five percent proficient already. So anytime you can help do the state, or at least be right there with them. First semester, I believe, we met with the V's team, and one thing that stood out with me during that meeting, and we had teachers at the table, we had to talk about recognizing our students' achievements. Weren't doing anything, so we ran a report for first semester. We identified sixty eight students with either straight A's or A D honor roll, ninety five percent or higher tennis rate, two or fewer discipline referrals for this group. We had sixty eight students, none of them had a referral, so. Had a cookout at the football field, actually, we had grades bringing burgers for them. And then we do, we have a family engagement night coming up Monday, it's a scholarship info night, and Dr. Rudd's gonna help us with that, a more presentation, Zillow presentation to help our kids identify their career path. And one more event that we're excited about, it's gonna be new for us. At the time of year for course requests, traditionally, and this is no fault of anybody, traditionally, the Sadler goes over and talks to the eighth graders, and meets with them in their class and slides their course requests in front of them. I can only imagine to an eighth grader how dry that must be. Again, no one's fault. So we're partnering, partnering with Ms. Roberts. Next Tuesday, March fourth, at two twenty, we'll be in the auditorium. We're bringing all of our CTE teachers over, elective teachers, Coach Braswell, and we're really gonna showcase what we have to offer at the high school, because we have seen, unfortunately, we tend to lose a lot of eighth graders for whatever reason, the grass is greener in other areas, and we want them to see all the great things going on at our high school. So that's what's going on.
Thank you.
Ms. Roberts?
Were you gonna put that out on social media about that next Tuesday?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I'd like, yeah, okay. I'll share that all I can. You'll always be a coach.
And we did our bingo the last time, and we did glow in the dark bingo.
I saw that.
Lights out, and I was really, obviously people love bingo. I used it for the kids that won the first second. Ask it for games, everything. That was great. Casa fed us all case. Another thing we're working on that we just. Good, is we are gonna do. Drive into some more of our. With that, we're also gonna do a boot camp coming up, algebra, civics, finance, great great. About two weeks. Oh, we have, she said, about next Friday. Welcome to any of y'all to join.
What time? What time?
It'll be about one thirty.
Thank you, Ms. Popple. She's turned into a world-class skier.
So we all, we've already had our family engagement night for this time. And we usually see the. Get a really cool science guy come out. And that was good. Something else that I didn't have, and I just thought about it, I would also shout out. So she arranged for Pace has now hired some content area experts that are free to us, and so we had a science expert come over from Pace. That was our fifth grade science team. Help us find a way to do a progress. Not something we've had access to before, and through our curriculum discovery, really did what they called a data mining with the teachers. Master so that we can have everything. Pay a consultant to help us with, but this is, by knowledge, free to us through Pace, so it's a cost saver and. Grant, grant funds elsewhere moving forward. Right, our. Good experience. From a club to back up and get ready for the shooting production, that's always fun. We're trying to put out to them. Several times about our Odyssey at the Mine Club, that's new to us this year, it is super exciting. They are doing some cool stuff. They met over president's day, the kids, even though they were off of school, they had. And I do a spontaneous judging with their friend. They actually compete this Saturday in Tallahassee at Buckley.
Oh, wow.
Stand and swim at nine o'clock. But Friday, we're gonna do a mock presentation at our school at three thirty after school. Practice in front of a live audience, so that's, that's gonna be fun. I'm not gonna be able to be there, because my little one has gymnastics. Other staff people will be there cheering them on. And then one other, oh, we've had a couple of, tomorrow, our third grade is going to the Jacksonville Zoo, that was rescheduled. The community and parents were super excited about us having to reschedule that last week because of the weather. For that, we went to Sea World, so the kids have been doing some fun stuff, but, you know, anything's going well. You can tell I went out. Go ahead. Said we often worked with, Pace hired two content specialists, science and social studies. And so social studies name and room, and I, our. Our statistics score, we know we can improve. Be aligned with K through three. Are there exactly that, there literacy?
Thank you.
All right, I just want to say again, thank you for a great administrative team, and everybody's working in, in the same direction, positive direction, to help educate the youth of our community the best way possible. Thank y'all for what you do.
That it? All right, thank you, thank you all for the reports. Ms. Ball, do we have anything, no more than the executive session?
That's all I have, thank you.
All right, Ms. Dunell?
Yes, I just want to acknowledge, I think there's been a couple of like sports events since the last meeting. I can't remember if it was before the last meeting or not, where we had our girls and boys soccer teams that was able to go off, and, you know, they went a little further than they have in the past, and I think I've seen something about them establishing a record or beating a record or something. So I just want to acknowledge our men's and women's soccer program, because I know I've got to see those programs grow, and just shout out to those, those coaches, you know, Dr. Kidd, Stuart Ely, and Zach Comstop, and the other coaches, I'm sure, those are the ones I know, far as the men and women's, but I'm sure there's other people that commit their time in their efforts to those programs, but I'm just always at press, impressed with the work that our programs do, and just to see them continue to grow and excel to new levels. So kudos to those programs. And I have, you know, like I say, I think it's good that we're seeing all these different activities going on in our schools, and it's great to always see those things, so it's good that the kids are getting an outlet, as well as they're still being focused on academics. I got the opportunity to attend the football banquet, and I enjoy attending the football banquet, and it was just nice to see those, again, just the work that has been done this past year with our football program. I think that that has been a community-wide effort, and just to be able to see it from start to finish in regards to the banquet and the different highlights celebrated, so I enjoyed that. I wasn't aware that we've had our military ball, and I was kind of surprised, because normally we've always gotten an invitation about that and been able to attend, so I hate I wasn't able to attend that, so, but it's good to hear that the military ball, you know, was, you know, organized and that the event did get to happen, and I'm sure those students enjoyed themselves, because they always do. And that's all I have tonight, other than, you know, we was able to do master boards, and I'm glad we was able to get that training completed, and just the information that was discussed during the meeting, I'm just, you know, anticipating where we're gonna go with what we did today, far as the development we've done as a board and administrator, so that's all I have.
All right, well, thank you, ma'am, and Ms. Agner.
When I look at y'all, I see all these great leaders out there, and it just does my heart so good. I appreciate all of your work and your efforts and the trustworthiness that we have with y'all. It makes our job here a lot easier, and I did get to go to the football banquet, it was really nice. I didn't realize we have sixty eight football players. So, and then I got to go to the baseball game that night against Dixie County, and they were whipping us, you hear me? And then I went on home, I said, well, I'll finish watching it on Gamechanger, you know, and bottom of the sixth, lo and behold, we come back, and then we, I think we go in overtime and we win. So there's, you know, it was a bunch of great students out there, a lot of participation, a lot of families there, so it was really, really good that we won. Our sports program is really taking off, and, you know, we've talked about this a million times, our education is key, we've got to educate our kids, but when somebody on the outside's looking in to bring a business, what kind of school do you have? What do you have for our kids to participate in? So the participation is key and important, and our Big Ben Technical, we're gonna showcase that, continue to showcase that for all areas of all walks. So I'm just, I'm just thankful that we've got the good district that we have, and finding out that we're getting some free coaching from Pace is really nice to know. Anytime we can get that free, we, we need to take advantage of it. But thank y'all again for coming and sharing with us, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you, ma'am, Ms. Mathis.
Yes, thank y'all, it's always good to hear from you and I wanted to ask, Casey, the talent show's next Friday, is that this Friday, next Friday? March seventh. So, so we built this beanstalk today from paper and tape and we, it was how tall we can make it, we made it all the way to the ceiling. This is a teamwork between the board and the superintendent, we're pretty proud of it, we left it for y'all to see. It had ten beans on it and they all stayed on, that was one of the key things, but, so I enjoyed the master board training today, I think we all did. And I needed to talk about a meeting in Steen Hatchie. Can we have a board meeting in Steen Hatchie?
Sure.
We normally have it in this time of year, March, April.
When you want to have it. Now that brings us to, are we going to have a meeting next week? Well, that, yeah, if we're not going to have a meeting next week, do we want to skip a week and go to Steen Hatchie? Mr. Ball.
Do we need to go to Steen Hatchie before or closer to the end of the year?
Well, this is the reason, you know, Steen Hatchie got an award, their school of excellence distinction and A school, so when we go is when that award is presented to the school and so that that's what they're waiting on, they're waiting on doing that for us to have a board meeting there.
So we need to have it before the end of the school year?
Yeah.
So we're looking.
There could be no problem being able to get one in before the end of the school year.
What about March eleventh? Skip next week and go March.
That's spring break and I won't be in town.
Oh, I was going to suggest a skip next week and just go to the eighteenth, which would be the third, third week in March.
And have it in Steen Hatchie?
Well, I I wasn't, that was before Jeannie said that, so let's see what the superintendent's schedule is.
We got a meeting that night anyway, March eighteenth.
Good. March eighteenth is good for me.
That we'll have that at five fifteen? Can we bump?
I'll just take off early, I'll just take off early. March eighteenth in Steen Hatchie?
You good with that, Debra? Can you?
What time?
Five fifteen or do you?
I mean, I think we always normally move the time so we, because some of us, so.
So you want to change it to six?
That's fine.
Are y'all cool with that?
Angela?
Yeah, that's fine, thank you.
The time, time will have changed, but that time too, I think the same.
It changes, yeah.
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth at six o'clock, okay, now are we still having the fourth?
The what?
Are we still having next week?
On the fourth.
Oh, that was.
Okay, we're canceling on the fourth.
Cancel.
Cancel on the fourth.
So when do we come back from spring break? What date do we come back from spring break? Is it that Tuesday or that Wednesday?
Monday seventeen.
Seventeen.
We come back on a Monday this year?
So it'd be the day after.
We come back on a Monday this year after spring break? Because I thought we've in the past have always had that as an in-service day.
That good enough with you?
Yes, I'm texting Jimmy now.
It seemed like last year we came back that Tuesday or Wednesday after spring break.
You got anything else?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm good.
Did you make any changes to the start date? Because I'll be asked, I've already had a text. Okay, thank you.
All right, Ms. Carlton.
Yes, just thanks to everybody for attending tonight and thanks for the updates, always good to hear, hear from y'all. As they mentioned, we did have our training today and it is, you know, we had to put in seven hours and so it's it's nice to have it behind us now, so hopefully we can move forward with that and of course it lets us maintain our status as a master board. Sports, as you mentioned about the football team, the having the banquet, the soccer teams having their playoffs, we've got all kinds of sports going on and I see a lot of Facebook posts on it and it's just, it's just great to see that much activity and and participation in our, in our county. And I think that's all.
Okay. Well, thank you, thank you all for being here this evening, it's been a long day for all of us.
We did more than that.
Yeah.
It didn't take us seven hours to do that.
But, but let me say, I guess by now you know what that is, does anybody not know what that is supposed to represent? Anybody, don't be ashamed to raise your hand if you don't know, it's supposed to be a beanstalk and I've been looking for the giant to come down that stalk at any time. But anyway, I appreciate the board and and the day that we've had and and I appreciate all the work, I I'm just sitting here thinking. Folks, time is just knocking us down. Here we just said our next board meeting is the eighteenth of March, March will be half gone time we meet again. Did you realize that that's not about eight, nine weeks before the school would be out? I mean, it's, I mean, it's just unreal.
So you count the days, don't you?
But, but I guess the point is, you know, we don't have, as swiftly as time gets by and we all, I think, desire and should desire to do the very best for for our district, for our community and I think this board resonates that, I think our employees do. So we don't have time to lollygag around, is the old saying, we just need to continue to stay busy doing good because this year soon be gone and we'll be looking at another one, if the Lord's willing, but thank you all for coming. And do we have a motion to second to adjourn? Ms. Carlton makes that motion, Ms. Agner seconds it. If you're in favor of that, say aye. Anybody opposed? This meeting is adjourned and we will take a short break and then we've got another short executive meeting.
Hey, Rachel, is it itching yet?